Well, today, we're here to hear from Milton Brown and Randy Truitt if those two candidates would make their way up here right now. Typically, we draw numbers for positions at the table. I'm just gonna let you guys arm wrestle today. No, seriously, you can sit where you'd like. Michelle, can you be a fact checker for me?
Yes.
Your twin can do it, so I know you probably can too.
I don't know that you can make that assessment.
Okay. I'll go all attorney-ish on me. As you know, we have the opportunity to ask questions as a group. We have a bunch that were submitted in email as well, so we have lots of questions. We'll start off by giving each of the candidates one minute to introduce themselves. Milton, you will go first. You'll also receive the first question, after which time the first person to answer each successive question will rotate between the two of you. So, you've got one minute. Milton Brown.
Okay. My name is Milton Brown. I'm gonna give a little of my own field myself. I worked for the Florida Highway Patrol for 27 years. While working for the Florida Highway Patrol, I received several awards. One that I'm very proud of is I was Trooper of the Year for the entire state of Florida. I was Trooper of the Month twice, and I also received twice the highest medal for the Florida Highway Patrol, and that is the Medal of Valor for two incidents and lifesaving incidents that I was involved in. During that time with Highway Patrol, I've always been involved in these schools. I've been a mentor in the Washington County Schools for over 20 years now. I've also taught classes, some classes called Safe Dates, Guiding Good Choices.
Ten seconds.
Guiding Good Choices, and I've been an instructor for the Highway Patrol. I've been an instructor in the school system. I've always been involved in schools, everything from coaching and everything else, and I just want to thank you.
Thank you, sir. Randy, you go first.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Kwanis, for hosting this event, giving us the opportunity to speak. My name's Randy Truitt. I'm a lifelong resident of Washington County. I work here. I've been working for the ambulance service for 24 and a half years. I'm in management now. I run the ambulance service for Washington County. I've managed a private ambulance service in Franklin County, so I come with to you with extensive management experience. I think my biggest asset is that I'm a good listener, and I will take the information that people give me, research it, and try to use it to build a plan.
Ten seconds.
To make our school system better. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Are there any questions to start with from the floor? I know we get started kind of early. A lot of people are still eating. I'll ask the first. Now, all of these have been submitted to us in email. We'll start with you, Mr. Brown. What is the purpose of public education?
The purpose of public education, I feel, there are a lot of people, and historically, education in Florida, if everyone doesn't know, is actually has been mandated by the state of Florida, by the Florida Constitution. And it originally started, which, there was a lot of private schools, and basically, you had to pay to go to school. So, the state of Florida came in and said, "We want every person," the mandate actually specifically said they wanted highly and highly educated workforce. And that started the public school system, and so it has continued to today. There would be students who could not go to school if there was not a public education system. And as we know, in Washington County, we, socioeconomically, we're not the most prominent county in the state as far as funding, so there simply would, people would fall through the cracks. Personally, one of the things that I like to think of is the fact that you educate people so that they can get out of school and be good citizens, productive citizens. And when I say productive citizens, no one wants to have to carry the burden of taking care of others. And I'll use this place here, for example, when you have places such as the Technical College and others that can create highly educated workforce, they can come out and be productive citizens, giving to the tax base of this county. And to me, that is important because we don't want any students falling through the cracks.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Truitt.
The purpose of public education is to allow everyone the same opportunity to live a good and prosperous life. The way to do that is to do a good education. That's the backbone of this county. Our nation is good education. So, to me, that's what public schools, that's what they are. They are the backbone. They are that tool to provide our youth with a good future.
Are you done?
Yes, I'm done.
Thank you. Questions? And since our superintendent is not here today, this is probably a safe one to ask. Would you support an appointed superintendent of schools, as many counties around us do, versus an elected superintendent? And Randy, you're the first up on this one.
I have to be honest and say, yeah, I would support an appointed superintendent. I feel that as a school board member, my job would be to create policies and monitor budgets. And it would be our superintendent's job to fulfill those policies, be consistent in his actions with them policies, and make sure that they're done. As it stands now, an elected superintendent, whether it's good or bad, we're stuck four years. If we got a bad one, there's nothing we can do. If we have an appointed superintendent, then we have choices. If we get somebody bad in there, we can make a change. It's the hard truth of this business, and most of y'all know. If you hire somebody and they're not doing you a good job, you don't want to be stuck with them for four years. And this is a very important position. That's what's going to steer the future of our children. So, we need somebody. If we happen to get a bad one, I'm not saying just cut it by no means, but it could happen. And if we did, I would like to think that we have some control over that.
Thank you. Mr. Brown? I personally would not support an appointed superintendent. I have been the chairman of the Washington County School Board for two years now. I've had the opportunity to deal with many superintendents throughout the state of Florida and many school board members throughout the state of Florida, and I can tell you many horror stories that occur based on that appointed superintendent position. Like Mr. Truitt said, as far as having the opportunity to get rid of and being stuck with them for four years, the ultimate power comes with the people. The same is, if I'm not doing my job, the people of Washington County have the opportunity to vote a person out who's not doing their job. Well, that occurs also with an elected superintendent. And if Mr. Taylor was sitting right here, I'd say the same thing. If he's not doing his job, then the public, the citizens of the state of Florida, the citizens of Washington County, has the opportunity to vote him out. There have been times where in those appointed superintendents and have gained power, and I don't know if everyone here knows it, but the appointments of an appointed superintendent comes through the school board. The school boards in those counties are the ones who actually appoint that superintendent. So, there's another level of power there, and I think that the ultimate power should and should always stay with the residents there that have that power to vote a superintendent in.
Thank you, sir. Questions? Michelle?
An issue for me, as the mother of two elementary school students here in Chick-fil-A, is the lack of play facilities at the new school. Can you talk to what you plan to do to help the county incorporate more play, more non-traditional, you know, not the books?
You're talking about the curriculum, not the playground?
I'm talking about, no, I'm talking about incorporating back into the schools more, I guess, the non-curricula, the music, PE.
The electives?
Yeah.
Does that, you go first, and does that make sense, the question?
Yeah.
It's you, Milton.
Okay. And if I'm understanding the question right now, I heard music mentioned, I heard play and...
Art.
All right. Correct me if I'm wrong, because you're, are you also including play equipment in that? I know there's been a question about whether or not there's playground equipment going in the new school.
Right, right.
In fact, I'll address that one first. Currently, in fact, this week, there's a contract who's coming, who is looking at and gonna give us a bid or give us the cost of putting playground equipment into the new school. I know it had been said there was not going to be playground equipment. That is inaccurate. We have agreed to fund new playground equipment. It will be coming, hopefully, real soon. We are gonna do kindergarten and first grade first, because they are the youngest. One of the first things that happened when I got elected to the Washington County School Board four years ago, Mr. Taylor came to us and asked us for funding to start music back into the Washington County school system. And we all agreed, and that was one of the first votes that I took in the Washington County school system, was to put music back in the classrooms. I am open, and I know at some of the schools, we do have some levels of art. We don't have it every day. But I fully, fully do agree that there's a lot, you know, you hear reading, writing, arithmetic, but there's a lot more that goes with education and teaching kids, teaching them how to get along with others than just being in the classroom. So, I would support any level and more activities in any way that I could.
Thank you, sir. Truitt?
Well, I agree that all children need playtime. They can't be cooped up in a, I can't be cooped up in an office all day as an adult. So, I couldn't fit a child. When I went to school, and probably like most of y'all, we had PG, which I look forward to going to. We had some playtime and breaks. I went to art class. I went to music class, wasn't really good at it, but I went, but I enjoyed it. And I do feel that our children need that release from getting that critical, crammed down in drugs. I mean, we all probably had those things provided to us when we went to school. I remember going to Ms. Van Lanningham's class, doing art. I enjoyed it. I think we need it. And I do think that if it's possible, we should bring all of that stuff back.
Thank you, sir. Questions? Gee?
Who has a final say in discipline matters, the principal or the superintendent?
Randy, you're first on this one.
Well, I believe it goes to what level of discipline? Are you talking about a student or a staff member?
I'm talking about a student. There's a problem, the student has a problem, he calls his favorite principal up and makes things go. Is it allowed to stop there, or does it have to go to the board or?
If I remember reading correctly, I think the school board has the ultimate authority on that. I believe they do. I think if there's an issue that can't get resolved at the principal level, then at the superintendent level, then I believe it's finally gonna come to the school board, and they have some authority there.
Are you done, Randy?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
It's according to what type of discipline you're talking about. If you're talking about an expulsion, the school board has the final authority on expulsions.
Does that answer your question, Gee?
Yeah.
Questions?
I have one.
Go ahead, Mr. Brown.
With our vocational college, it's something that I've had a personal desire for a long time, and never could get the school board to move with it, but we are in an ideal situation for each student who graduates from this system to have one syllable skill when they get their diploma, without diminishing or reducing the ability to prepare it for a college education. It's gonna take a lot of creativity. It's gonna take a lot of organization. It can be done. But as a school board member, what is your position on that? And do you think that it should be a non-required area where everything can float along like it's presently doing?
Milton, you're first on this one.
Okay. The state of Florida requires, has, in order for a child to graduate, as you know, they have required courses that a student must get. Some students who fall behind, unfortunately, have to make some of those up. Based on some of those requirements and some of those problems, the Washington County school system, actually, we have a plan in place that we have discussed, that we would like to petition the state to let us be, let us be an experimental county if required. There are only about 33% of Washington County students going to college. We have said, and we've told everybody that'll listen, we are not doing our students of Washington County any good if all we do is simply follow the state's rules and say, every one of them has to be prepared this high calculus, this high geometry, and all that, when they're not gonna go to college. You're setting them up to fail. You're not giving them a usable skill. So, we actually have a plan, if the state will adopt it, we would like for the state to relieve some of the pressure as far as saying, "You have to meet all these requirements to send these kids to college." And it's saying that for all, 100% of our students, and we know that 100% of our students aren't going to college. So, we're hurting ourselves. We're hurting Washington County by trying to force all of them to fit into this one square peg. And we fully, I'm telling you, I have studied that, what you're talking about. We have academies throughout the state which are actually working within the school system. Gulf Power, which is a great resource, Gulf Power has an academy that started in Polk County that is going great. Yet, we aren't allowed to do that here based on some requirements by the state. And what we've done, and what we're hoping to do, is get our state legislators, get them on board, get some others on board who can be our sounding voice for Washington County and say, relieve some of the pressure that we have so that we can, so we can do what we need to do.
Thank you. Mr. Truitt?
I totally 100% agree with you. It breaks my heart to see a program shut down at this technical college. I remember being a PhD coming here, and every room was full. We were putting people out there with marketable skills that they could leave school and get a job. It's getting better, but I look at the campus, it's not as beautiful as it used to be, which attracts people to our schools. We're not offering the same programs that we used to offer. I think that we need to offer as many programs out here as we can. I've had the great honor and privilege to work for this part of the school system. I helped start the EMT program here at the school. I had about 160 hours of time invested in just getting that program started. And it was probably one of the much rewarded things I've ever done, and it's been a successful program. We need more things like that where children, when they graduate, and they're young adults, when they leave this school, they're prepared for college, and they have that trade. Because you can only put so many college graduates to work. You've gotten out somebody with a trade. There's only so many jobs for a college graduate. So, yes, I would love to be a part of building this technical college to the worst busting it seems with students and programs.
It's not a quick, I'm gonna take a quick one here. I work with the State Department, and what we need, if you'll go there, and you'll get approved through the commissioner and also through the department. We had Washington County pre-approved for a 10-year study. 10 years, it takes 10 years to know where it's gonna work and all. But for every child in Washington County to exit that stage with a syllable skill without diminishing any college prep. Out of these 30%, they go to college. Over 50% of those, they drop out before the summer.
13%, I believe.
Pardon? I think it's 13% of what I read.
In all fairness, 20 or so of the available 40-degree certification programs offered right here on the campus are open for dual enrollment, and it's not for lack of programs, we just don't have a lot of interest. And I think a lot of it, we're trying to educate the parents, and there's no cost at that point to the student or the parent, so, absolutely. And so that starts at home, too. Any other questions? What is the job description of the school board member in Washington County? And Randy, you go first on this one.
Make policies, institute policies, and monitor and approve budgets. That is our job. And to be an advocate for our school systems and our community, whether it be on local level, state level, federal level, whatever, however how we need to go with it, that's what we need to do. But that is our job. It's not to be involved in day-to-day operations. We've got good people in place to do that. Make policies, make policies that we can follow. It's not gonna box us in. It's not gonna cause us problems. They have to be well thought-out policies, and when we enact them, we need to be consistent in following these policies. Because that's where much policies fall short, is consistency is which we follow. As far as the budget goes, we just need to be a good steward of tax dollars. Make every tax dollar work for every student to the best of his ability.
Mr. Brown?
He's correct. Policy and budget. Now, within those things such as policy, getting some of the stuff you're talking about doing as far as with the budget, that's been one of those things that I think, where you spend your money is where your importance is. Obviously, technology, one of the things that we've even had workshops on is technology. We have to keep our Washington County students in the forefront. I think we're doing a good job. We have a plan on making a one-on-one, giving each student in Washington County their own device as far as a computer to work in the classrooms. There's a plan by, you mentioned DOE, by DOE, to have all students and all testing on computers in the near future. And if we in Washington County don't have a computer for each child, then you really delayed their ability to not only take those tests, but prepare for those testing and any other kind of training. Going back to the Technical College, since I've been on the board, I can tell you, we've done, and Paul, you mentioned it correctly, interest within the Technical College. I remember being in high school, even going to high school in Vernon, they would bust us up here, let us take a tour, get our interest going. We started that back last year. It was great when we were able to get the teachers out. I was able to come out here with them. When we bust all the teachers and had all the teachers come up and do a tour. And watching our own teachers within Washington County's school system come through the Technical College and say, "Wow, I didn't even know this was in Washington County. I didn't even know we had the ability to do this." And that, to me, to have those students or to have those teachers with that knowledge, and to be able to say to those students, "You know what? You're good in this. You ought to look at maybe cybersecurity."
Ten seconds.
I disagree the fact that we need to keep some of the programs as old, because stuff like small engines, obviously, nobody really, there's not a whole lot of that going on anymore. But stuff like cybersecurity is the future, and I'm really supporting that.
Thank you, sir. Questions? Gee?
How can we avoid losing students to the northern part of Bay County? So much money for every student that goes there instead of coming here. I think it's, what, $1,000 or $2,000 per kid that we lose?
It's more than that.
You're talking about the FETs?
Pardon? I live in Greenhead. Instead of coming to Chick-fil-A, I go to Bosworth.
You're first on that, Milton. Does that give you enough to answer?
It does. That is a tough situation. I can tell you, I know of parents who do exactly what you're talking about, not for sports, not for band, not for anything other than the fact that parents sometimes say, "Well, I live in Bay County. It's easier for me to drive them there." And I try to sell Washington County all I can, Washington County school system. And I think some of our test scores will back this up. I would put us against any school system in the area any day of the week. And I try to inform them. A lot of times, they're not that informed. I try to inform them of what we have, what we have to offer. One of the things to me is the Technical College here. I think Ms. Compton's doing a great and fabulous job here. So, I don't know that there's a solve-all, that you could say, "We're gonna draw a line, we're gonna stop them from coming." There is reciprocal agreement that deals with the superintendents who allow certain students to cross the lines based on reasoning. But I wish I knew that answer, because the minute you say, "We're gonna stop them all," you've created another problem. But I do what I can personally, and I know I've talked to several parents and tried to explain to them the benefits of coming and getting a good Washington County education.
Mr. Truitt?
I think the answer to that question is kind of outside the school board's hands. I think we need to turn the parents' direction of employment back to Washington County and not Bay County. That's the only way I feel that we're gonna turn them children back to Washington County schools. If they're driving by a Bay County school to get to work, it's easier for them to take the children there. I'm not gonna be the one who stands in their way. So, I feel that the problem is better jobs within the county. Make people come to Washington County. Then they'll put the children in Washington County schools. I think that's the root of the problem.
In all fairness, it works the other way. We're forging a relationship with Jackson County right now, where Jackson County High Schools are sending students here for their dual enrollment and driving right by Chappola to do so because of the opportunities that we have over other institutions such as Chappola. So, in all fairness, it kind of, it works both ways, so that's another debate, probably. Questions?
Do you think there'd be a potential for another school, high school in the south end of the county?
Randy, you're first on this one.
The population would have to increase, but...
Yes, sir. I've been in county government for, like I said, 24 and a half years in Washington County. And in that 24 and a half years, I've heard about things that are going to develop in the south part of the county. And I, in my heart, truly believe that it will at some point. But we've got to build the infrastructure down there to support that growth, and I don't think that the county has the money. With that being said, if we did have that growth and the need was there, then we might have the funds to put a school down there. But I think it all rests on, you know, the area growth, which I'm hopeful that it will someday.
Mr. Brown?
Again, right now, currently, we actually do have land in Sunny Hills, the Washington County school system, that has been set aside for schools if that growth occurs. I know at one time, Northern Trust there in the southern part, down near Ebro, had put together a sector plan, which was not approved, but within that sector plan, there had to be land set aside and things for schools. Based on what you're saying, in order to fund that, it would, obviously, growth would have to come, the tax base would have to go up. Unfortunately, and I don't know if most people here know this, but Washington County's tax base went down again last year. And when that occurs, there's only so much you can do. Obviously, as far as me, I'm very conservative. I do not want to simply say, "Okay, well, the tax base, well, now let's raise rates." No, I first want to try and do everything we can, we can do conservatively and saving money there before we look at trying to raise any taxes, because that would be, to me, a last, last resort. And I just don't see that need there yet. But if the growth occurs, if the increase in the tax base occurred, and that's where the growth will at, I have no problem. In fact, like I said, the land is already set aside for a new school if that situation occurs.
A half-cent sales tax was defeated in a referendum several years ago. That money's set aside for connectivity and internet access in large part. Going forward, would you, as a school board member, support the resurgence of that vote on that respective ballot? And why? And Milton, you're first on this one.
To me, that's the way it should be done. I think that the facts should be laid out there. When there, such as in that last debate over whether or not there should be a half-cent sales tax. By Florida law, the school board, as far as a public together entity, has to remain neutral. We cannot get out and... We cannot, uh, get out and say stand on the street corner or spend any money in support of or against that. My ultimate thing would be, I want to let the voters decide. Whether I personally support it or I, I don't support it, the ultimate power, I think, lies within the, uh, the voters of Washington County. I do see that it can actually help Washington County as far as the, the money that could be spent, um, directly on connectivity. Again, I'll say it again, technology is the future. That's why I'm a strong supporter of the technical college, the technical colleges, cybersecurity program, everything that they, we have here, uh, dealing with cybersecurity. One of the things that was mentioned to me, somebody took a tour of the, um, cybersecurity pro, program at the University of West Florida. They also took a tour of the one here at the technical college. And they said, this one here is hands and feet above the one at that university. I was very proud of that. That's one of the things I think we, we can support. But that does cost money. And again, I would have no problem saying, let the voters decide. But again, I have no problem, as I did in the past, accepting their decision.
Mr. Truitt.
Um, half-cent sales tax. I am a firm believer that that should be left up to the residents of Washington County. Now, I also believe in a budget that is operated by payers you get. If you don't have it, you don't get. So, I agree with you. I think that it could benefit the schools. I think there's some other means of funding, franchise fees, different things that could fund, uh, school systems and, you know, the problem with a tax is it usually only affects a small percentage. There's a large percentage of people in Washington County that don't pay taxes. Even a half-cent sales tax, there's so many people in the southern portion of the county that never spend a dollar here. They go to Pine Mall City, they work in Pine Mall City. So you've still got the main people that are supporting this community as it stands, still supporting it with another tax. So before I would agree to one, I would, uh, uh, even support one, I would want the community, Washington County, to vote and say, this, this is what we want. So everybody's taxed to death already. We've got a society full of a small group of people paying for a large group of people.
Thank you, sir. Nicole.
Right, we've talked, uh, quite a bit about the importance of technology and making sure our kids are, uh, able to use technology and integrate it to, uh, work and, uh, and in their educational process. And then we've also talked about funding. What are your plans, uh, for making sure that we are able to maintain and sustain, sustain a replacement plan for technology which quite frankly changes very quickly?
Randy, you'll go first on this one.
Well, um, I've got some nephews that live in Taping, South Carolina. I don't believe they could tote a actual workbook, school book home in probably five years, six years. Every student in that school has iPads. They're advanced. They're graduating, they're going to top-ranked colleges. That's what kids want, that's what they pray is technology. They're gonna learn from technology. How are we gonna fund this? How are we gonna keep up with it? I don't know, I couldn't even tell you. Um, I think that the schools and the school board are doing a great job. I think there's room for improvement, but it all comes down to funding. Are we funding something that we don't need to? Can we ship some of this money over here? I've looked at the budget, been looking at the school budget. It's a pretty complicated thing. Um, if we don't have the money, I think that we need to look for alternative funding because I, I feel like we need to be as technic, uh, technologically advanced as we can to make our kids grow. They, they are gonna grow mentally, they are gonna, the kids that are struggling now, a kid that's struggling on bookwork, they could get on computer and kick it out like that. There's a hundred, over a hundred and eighty thousand apps that they can download on an iPad.
Ten seconds.
That are gonna benefit them education for free. So yeah, I, I don't know how we fund it, but I would love to fund it. That's one of my passions is to fund it.
Thank you, sir.
Um, we have a designated person on district level, which you might be aware of or not, but their job is, part of their job is to seek funding for, um, technology. Federal government actually does, does recognize that that is an important thing as far as education is concerned. Washington County has been fortunate to get some, some grants in that area. That's one of the ways we've actually started and being able to get some of the, uh, some of the tablets and notebooks and, and all in the schools. Uh, currently, it's based on some of the grants and all and funding that we've got. As far as future funding and future things, and you, you hit it on the head, um, technology changes so frequently till the main thing is you have to stay on top of it. Um, with the construction of the new elementary school, one of the things that we did as a board along with Mr. Taylor was, we said, we want to wait as long as possible before we make these technology decisions because that school's been, the planning and all has been underway for a while and the decisions we might have made even six months ago could be outdated today. There were some changes that took place, um, that, that actually in Washington County's favor, upgrades for no cost simply because we waited until the newest stuff came out and we were able to get larger monitors and things at no cost to Washington County. And that was some, some of the forethinking that you have to do in, in, along with, when you're talking about technology because you can't just make a decision today and think, okay, this'll be good two years from now. Um, any of you, and I know that a lot of you did take a tour of the new school, one of the things we wanted to make sure of was that we had access to the cabling and all. Um, we have top-of-the-line cabling out there now, but that top-of-the-line cabling might be outdated in, in six months.
Ten seconds.
And I see Mr. Hawkins there and he knows that's something that you have to deal with. So access and being able to think, think ahead is very important when it comes to technology.
Thank you, sir. Questions? As a school board member, what do you see as the primary role of the school guidance counselor? And Milton, you go first on this one.
Guidance counselors, the, they have many roles. Right now, um, I'll be honest with you, they are so, they're stretched so thin till I'd like to get them some help. Um, one of the things, the primary thing now, they do scheduling and making sure that, um, all the students are along that pace. And we talked about requirements that the state requires as far as each child to be able to graduate. You have to have so many math, so many Englishes and all that. And it's a huge job on the part of the guidance counselor to be able to look and say, okay, I've got all these five-hundred-and-sixty students, um, in line to, to not, you can't only look at the seniors because if you look at only the seniors as far as graduation, it's too late. You have to start with that ninth grade and that. Those guidance counselors are doing enormous and a great job in what they do. I'd like to see if I could get them some help, truthfully, because there's a, we have lots of scholarships out there that go unclaimed. And I'd like to see us get them some help as far as trying to identify certain students. Those students, even though there may, might not be a large percentage that are going to college, but when we do find a student who has the potential and has the ability to go to college, finances should not be the thing to keep that child from being able to go. So I'd like to see us get, get guidance counselors some help so that they're not only looking at graduating those students, but they can search out those scholarships, those unclaimed scholarships, search out and be able to help those students who are gonna go to college, find scholarships. And, and when I was in school, that was, that was a part of the guidance counselors and they still do a lot of that. But it, they're stretched so thin till I think there's a lot more that we could offer to help them.
Ten seconds.
And be able to do if we could give them some more help.
Thank you, Mr. Truitt.
Well, I'm gonna tell you, probably one of the, uh, most memorable people I met when I was going to school, Ms. Rogers, she's our guidance counselor. She could look at a kid and she knew when they were having a bad day. And she'd come up and give you a hug, come to my office. And she would talk to you and she would make things better. That's a guidance counselor. That's what they're meant to do, guide you when you're having trouble, they guide you. They also need to, if they come to me and say, Randy, you're not doing so good in this class, but you're doing really good in these, you need to pick this up. They need to give you that support. I don't think, they should be looking for financial aid and stuff like that. We need a financial aid officer if that's what is holding kids back from going to school. We need somebody that's helping them. We need guidance counselors to guy, give guidance, to talk to students. You go see these kids, when they have a tragic incident happen in their family, somebody from the school goes see them. Somebody address those issues when they come back to school. Give them guidance. Let our guidance counselors go back to doing what they were trying to do. Give guidance in places that's needed. That's what I think the guidance counselor's role in the school system is.
Thank you. Good time for one more question before we do the wrap-up. David.
I've heard rumors since we've had this new school coming in that, uh, we're expecting a possible, a big influx of students coming in just in case that, um, maybe kids used to go to private school and now wanna go to the brand-new public school. Are we prepared for that? I know we'll get the good grade back. Also, are we prepared for an extra hundred students in addition to that or wherever it may be?
Uh, Randy, you'll be first on that. In all fairness, that sort of goes to having been an incumbent in that position, but if you guys are good with it, we'll, we'll go ahead and answer that question. Randy, first?
If the budget for the school is like it, like any other budget, it's tight. So I would have to say, do they have the classrooms? Yeah, say probably I'll put in classrooms for more students. But do they have the staff to take upon a hundred more students or, or more? I seriously doubt it. And I'm only saying that because we got guidance counselors that are stretched out and wanting to hire, you know, Mr. Milton's wanting to hire more people to help them, which I think is a good idea. But, so I would say no. Do they have a plan? They may have a plan. I don't know what it is. Um, I personally, I, I see, uh, a huge drift of pulling kids out of school, either homeschool them because school, sending a kid to school has gotten so expensive. It's, it's a hundred dollars before you ever buy clothes or shoes for them. And then the parents are saying, well, we're sending all this stuff to school. My son says only he's going four, and I said twenty-five. So I see people pulling their kids out to homeschool because it's so expensive to send them to school. I see them going to private schools. So I think for every hundred we gain, we're gonna lose close to that many going to private schools or homeschooling.
Thank you, Mr. Milton.
One of the best things, uh, experiences I, that I've had, uh, since being a board member, um, was when we did some tours out at the new elementary school. And I was talking with some parents and one of the parents said, our kids go to Jackson County, but we're bringing them back here to go to Washington County schools. Um, they saw the facility, they saw, um, the excitement, or felt the excitement and they know that we're gonna do and we have the teachers to do well at, at new school. Um, unfortunately, now the bad side is, the requirements and the limits that the Department of Education put on you, when you're, they fund a new school and help you build a new school is, it sounds crazy, but they will only allow you to build a school for the number of students that you currently have. They don't look at growth, they don't look at future growth, and it is very frustrating. That's one of the reasons why, uh, a lot of other places over the state, you may drive and see a brand-new school with portable sitting outside of it. And that's frustrating. I'm proud to say that at the beginning of this school, coming school term, Washington County will not have any portable sitting on their school campuses. And those are very expensive to rent and all, and they're not very safe, to be honest with you. So we're very proud of the fact that we'll be able to do that, but the frustrating thing is, the limits is, is that they tire our hands as far as future growth and building for the future growth currently. But, um, obviously, we do have to have backup plans that, I hope we have that problem next year. I hope we're busting at the seams of where the problem is, let's hire more teachers, let's look at where we're gonna put them. Because I think then the word would get out. One of the things that I've been screaming is that our third grade, third graders from this year, we came out ranked eleventh out of sixty-seventh counties in the state of Florida. Little Washington County's doing it right. We've got Palm, we got, uh, Palm Beach and all those counties and, and places down there are calling us, asking us, how are you doing that? And I'm proud of that.
Thank you, sir. Uh, before they have their one-minute wrap-up, I want to point out that next week we'll enjoy the District Two, uh, Washington County School Board candidates. Uh, following that, the next five weeks will be the Congressional District Two, House Representative District Five, Washington County Property Appraiser, Fourteenth Judiciary Circuit State Attorney, not necessarily in that order. Today, we hope to solidify the exact sequence of those and, uh, we're waiting on word back from several of those candidates to do that. That said, uh, Mr. Brown, you're first, you have one minute to wrap up and tell us exactly why we should vote for you.
Well, main thing is I think Washington County is headed in the right direction. Do we have problems? Of course. But I think we have some people in place to make the right decisions, to continue the advancements that we made in Washington County. It was one of the proudest times, again, Hern, uh, Hernando County came over and toured our new school. When they saw that school, they didn't say we want a school like that, they said, we want that school. And Washington County don't get a chance to do that very often, be the showcase of other places. But when, when we've done it right, I think we, we can, we can be proud of all of Washington County, Washington County citizens. Uh, our teachers, I will put them against any in the state. They've proven time and time again that with the resources they have, they will rise to the top.
Ten seconds.
And I think we're on the right track and I would simply ask each and every one of you to continue to let me be the voice of the Washington County citizens and continue to let me be, um, your, your representative from District Three. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And Randy, you've got a final word tonight.
Education is the future of Washington County. Without it, we're not gonna do anything. We're doing a great job, like Mr. Milton said, we are doing a great job, but there's always room for improvement. I want to be part of that. I hope y'all can tell how passionate I am about this position. I want to be in that, in that seat. I want to work hard for Washington County and I want to help improve the school system. We do have great school system, we got great teachers, got awesome bus drivers. Our staff are great, but we do need to improve. If we, if we just don't keep improving, we'll fall apart. And I feel our passion enough and ready to help make some progress happen. And I thank y'all for your time and I would appreciate your vote.
Thank you, sir. Thanks to both of our candidates. Do we have any last announcements before we adjourn? Then we, we will be returned. Thank you so much.
Thank y'all, Gary.